Determination of a quorum.
Yes, ma'am. Is this working? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Mr. Decorda? Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Kendrick?
Here.
Mr. Maffett did let us know he would be absent tonight, so mark him as absent. Ms. Flatley? Mr. Nicely is joining us remotely. Mr. Nicely, can you hear us? I know it was working before. Okay, we'll keep, Chris, keep trying on getting Mr. Nicely. Mr. Pallavoda?
Here.
Regardless, we do have a quorum, so hopefully he can jump on teams.
Thank you. Now, if you will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Lord, we are grateful for this opportunity together and to contribute to our community as members of this commission. We ask your guidance and your wisdom as we discuss and decide the matters before us. Let all that we do be for good and not for evil. I ask you to continue to protect and bless our county in Jesus's name. Amen.
Okay, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we amend the agenda tonight to bring the special presentation for Mr. Jason Williams forward to just after the public comment period.
Just before the public comment?
Before the public comment period, okay, very well.
All right, all in favor? Can we just do a?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is amended. The next thing we need to do is elect a new vice chair. That position is open from now until January, when we will re-vote for both chair and vice chair again at the beginning of the year. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Sean Pallavoda.
Seconded. Thank you.
You're willing to accept that nomination?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, is this roll call or just show of hands? Okay.
Okay. Do we need a motion to elect? Could you do a similar motion to elect in a second? I know we did a motion of nomination, but now we need a motion to elect.
All right, so we need to make a motion, not for nomination, but to elect Mr. Pallavoda to vice chair.
Okay, I make a motion to elect Mr. Sean Pallavoda to vice chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Okay, for a roll? I was gonna call a roll.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll do by roll call vote. Okay. Mr. Kendrick?
Nay.
Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Decorda?
Aye.
Ms. Flatley?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Nicely, are you with us now?
Let's try the audio. Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations.
All right, do you want to move your chair? All right, so as Mr. Williams will attest, the first job of the vice chair is to help pronounce the names on the public comment sheet. All right, so next on the agenda is to approve the minutes of October 14th, 2025. Give everybody a minute. If they have not looked them over, to please do that.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any nays? And abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention.
I have to abstain as well. I was not there last month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have moved the special presentation forward to recognize the outstanding service of Jason Williams. I'm gonna read through what this says, and then I'll meet you up front to hand it to you. Recognition of outstanding service presented to Mr. Jason Williams in appreciation for his years of dedication to the citizens of King George County as a member of the King George County Planning Commission. Mr. Williams demonstrated serious commitment to the tasks and decisions presented, including participation in the review of planned development projects, rezoning applications, special exception permits, text amendments, and implementation of the zoning and subdivision ordinance of the King George County and King George County Comprehensive Plan. His tireless commitment to duty enhanced life in King George County and served as an admirable example of public service. And I certainly appreciate your leadership and the example that you've set up here, and you will be missed. If there's anybody else who would like to say something, please do.
It was an honor to work with you, Jason, and you will definitely be missed. Really appreciate your open mind and your thoughtfulness in your decisions.
Second that, Jason, your long experience and your dedication to the county and all of its citizens made me a better planning commissioner, and thank you for teaching me through my starting days, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you do next.
I'd also like to second that. Mr. Williams, it was always a pleasure to serve with you, and you always displayed, I would say, a lot of patience and good temperament in the position, and carried it out very effectively. Thank you for your service.
Jason, you and I spoke earlier, so I will not repeat any of the personal comments I made to you, but I think you and I were the last, or the two most tenured ones on the board on the commission. We had a great deal of respect for you and your thoughtful consideration of everything that came before us. I personally will miss you, and I think the commission is blessed for your departure. So my best wishes to you in the future.
All right, so next on the agenda is to open citizen comment period. This comment period is for general comments, not related to the specific public hearing items. If you have comments related to those specific public hearings, please offer them at the time of the public hearing. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Mr. David Baird?
I'll wait for the case specific. Sorry, I didn't know which one was I.
That's okay. Is there anyone else that has a general comment?
Simon Wrongone. Gary Butler, 9441 Kings Highway, My Business. It's more of a question for you all, is where do we stand on the beginning of the comprehensive plan review? Long overdue.
We, I was gonna say, we'll address that later. We don't typically answer questions during public comment, but I understand your question. It will get answered. Anyone else? All right, so now that the citizen public comment period is over, we can discuss the public comment among ourselves. And I believe this question was answered at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. That, do you want to explain it?
Yes. So the Board of Supervisors did allocate money for a comprehensive plan update consultant in this year's fiscal budget, so it's Mr. Smolik and my goal to get the RFP out for consultants in January. So hopefully a kickoff in spring.
Thank you.
It's the board's wishes for it to be a very public process, so I'm not quite sure what that looks like yet, but we'll figure it out.
All right, any other discussion on public comment? All right, we'll move on to Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Support Facility South Potomac, Dogwood, is Mr. Adam Lynch here? I don't see him, so we will begin our public hearing. We're gonna open the public hearing for Resolution PC 18-25 Ordinance Amendment 0A-02-25.
Okay, I'll start by just giving a brief overview of the ordinance amendments that are before us tonight. I'll ask Mr. Dines if you could scroll to a couple pages down on the agenda packet. Keep going. Yep, if you could just keep scrolling down till we get to the edited portions. Yep, keep going. There you go. Let's start there. Go up a little bit. Okay, perfect. Thanks, Chris. So in your packet tonight are several ordinance amendments that the commission, the Board of Supervisors, and a separate subcommittee have been debating over the last year regarding increasing the minimum lot areas in the agricultural zoning districts, as well as amendments to the access requirements for subdivisions. The proposed changes to the minimum lot areas in the agricultural zoning districts are from 10 acres to 20 acres in the A1, 2 acres to 5 acres in the A2 district, and 1 acre to 3 acres in the A3 district. If you'd scroll down a little bit more, Chris. Okay, so here you can see in footnote 3, there will be no change to the lot size requirements for family subdivisions, so the edits that you see under section 10-2-4 are meant to clarify that. If you'd scroll down a little bit more, please. So this is the section on family subdivisions, and if you go to the end, you'll see it's just meant to clarify that this... I guess my time is up. That's funny. Keep scrolling. Okay, there you go. So this section of the family subdivision ordinance is just proposed to reiterate that there won't be any changes to the existing acreage requirements for family subdivisions. So if you keep going down a little bit further, there was a lot of discussion throughout this process regarding major subdivisions and how to better control or limit access points or driveways onto primary and secondary roads. Those are the proposed edits that you see here to section 10-3-6. The previous ordinance had language in it that required major subdivision lots to access off all internal roads, so it is proposed to put that requirement back into this ordinance. There are also some proposed changes to the access table, if you go down a little bit more. Keep in mind that in some cases, major subdivision proposals will be coming before the commission and the board as rezoning applications, which will allow for further discussion with developers on a case-by-case basis. Staff did receive one email comment yesterday evening, which I forwarded to you all this morning, and Resolution PC-18-25 is included in your packet for consideration, and staff is available to take questions after the public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we will open public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. And the first one is David Baird.
Good evening. My name is David Baird. I live at 7430 Dogwood Lane, and I'm here to talk about the family subdivision ordinance with regards to the minimum lot size. When I came to the Board of Supervisors meeting, I don't remember how long it was, a few months ago maybe, they were mentioning that a family subdivision, you can make the lot any size, but I told them that, no, it's based on the current zoning of the property that's in. So according to the current family subdivision ordinance, 10-2-4C4, the minimum width, yard, and area requirements of all lots, including the remaining property, shall be in accordance with the applicable provision of this ordinance, meaning the zoning ordinance. So if the minimum lot size is 2 acres, for my zoning specifically, A2, and you guys change it to 5 acres, then that, of course, is gonna inhibit me from doing the division that I want to do for a family member. But I see with the proposed ordinance that you guys are changing that code, 10-2-4C4, and adding a sub 1, 2, and 3 in there for the three specific zonings, A1, A2, and A3, so that it does not change the minimum lot size for the family subdivision. And I know the whole purpose of the changes to these minimum lot sizes is to deter growth to an extent mainly from developers, because I know you don't really get proffers for minor subdivisions. You only get that for major subdivisions, and certainly not for family subdivisions. So I just wanted to make sure that those new changes under the family subdivision ordinance were going to be what the young lady was showing earlier, for 10-2-4C4 subset 1, 2, and 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gary Butler?
Good evening. Reason I asked about the comprehensive plan earlier was because right now we've got the cart before the horse. It's extremely unusual to do a total county rezoning. 91.4% of the county would change with this proposed downzoning before the comprehensive plan. Rezoning follows a comprehensive plan, so it's all out of whack. You all should vote against it for if no other reason than it is the cart before the horse. Do your work for the next year, and go through the... I was on the planning commission when we did a comprehensive plan review years ago. I'm telling you, it is a major, major, major task and undertaking. It's just huge. But when you do the comprehensive plan and they designate growth areas, then you change the zoning to follow that plan. That's your bible. This started a year ago, November. It didn't start in earnest until January, then there was a bit of an outcry, and they appointed the ZOTAC Committee. I went to every ZOTAC committee meeting and didn't miss a one. The final vote of the ZOTAC committee was six to one against it, and the one was more of an abstention, but it was a vote against it. So that committee dug into it fairly in-depth, and their conclusion was that this was not a good thing for the county. King George has the lowest tax rate, other than Westmoreland County and the greater Fredericksburg area. It was largely brought up because of schools. Once the staff provided the information to the ZOTAC committee on schools, turns out that we've only got .55 students per household. And when they started this thing out, they were saying it was $8,000 local share per student, and it's actually $5,300 per student. You all can do the math. They studied Hopyard and Presidential Lakes, two largest subdivisions, .55 kids per household. So, and the schools have now backed off of building the new school over where the old middle school was. It's kind of a manufactured crisis, and we simply don't need to do it. It will devalue the value of the land, which would impact the tax base. Then the tax base would have to make up the deficit or shortfall by hitting the existing homes in the county. So people who say they don't own but the house and their lot, and it won't affect them, is not true. They may very well be affected to balance the budget. Thank you. Vote against it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Baird?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bob Baird, 15316 Kings Highway in Shallow District. Building on what Mr. Butler said, we are putting the cart before the horse. We need the comprehensive plan. There are a number of issues that need to be addressed overall before we get into this kind of detail here. First, I'll ask a question. Do any of you own land in King George? I don't care what size it is. Do you believe that land has value to you? Do you want that land to retain its value to you? Do you want to be able to distribute that land to your children when it's time? Is it right to take something of value away from the citizens here based on changes that we believe are undefined here because we haven't justified it? And we really come with the right solution for growth, or are we jumping at conclusions? I'll ask a couple of questions. For example, is what is a family in King George? I'll guarantee you there are situations where aunts, uncles, cousins, stepchildren are closer than actually children, but are those relatives defined as part of your family, or they should be included as part of your larger family? I guarantee you, my family, the Baird clan in Shallow, is related in one way or another to a good percentage of Shallow District. We have close relations to many families. That being said, are you prepared to turn of the value of your property to the government based on the zoning change, or are you making the assumption that we want to retain the value in that property, or the appreciating value of that property, based on the assumptions, based on the zoning when we acquired the property? Is that illegal taking? We need to maintain our citizens' rights. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Gary Slitzman?
Good evening. My name is Gary Slitzman. I live in 4 Fitzhugh Trail, Stafford County. My wife and I have owned land in King George for over 20 years. Purchased it when I worked at the lab. It was one of the investments that we made. Typically, investments will be, as you know, land, or your home, or stocks, or CDs. And I am totally against any changes in the zoning. Now, I noticed on the monitor that the numbers had been changed from what I've been told. I don't know if they've been updated or what, but I did the calculations on how much a landowner would lose if the new proposed ordinance was put in effect, and it's somewhere between 30% to 50%, just like that. Now, if you lost that kind of percentage change in your other investments, such as CDs or stocks, you would be upset, to say the least. So any radical change in the zoning is a drastic effect on the monetary value, and these are all investments, and I'd appreciate it if they would stay investments. Thank you.
Thank you. And now that we've concluded our sign-up list, if there's anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello. Rose Payne, 15123 Hazel Nut Lane. The last time I came before this commission about this ordinance change, I still want to know how this benefits me as a landowner and a taxpayer. Been in this county 87 years, and I've never seen anything like this, a grabbing of somebody's property to hold down development. Is that the reason? The last time we were here, you all agreed, we didn't know what they were trying to accomplish. I still don't. And if it is to control development at our expense, I will own the same amount of property with this zoning change, but the value won't be the same, but I'll pay the same taxes. That does not seem fair to me. I just don't know what the rationale is for this. I still don't know. I have talked to the board. I've talked to you. I don't know where this is going, but I think it's at the expense of the property owner. I think we have more to lose than to gain, just like you've heard people talk about, our property, our rights as a property owner. I've been here before trying to do something with my farm, as you all know. You didn't want me to do that. I wanted to keep it in agriculture. No, you didn't want that. What does the county want? What do you want from us as property owners? That's what I hope you will address, and I've heard about the comp plan, and I've heard other people speaking the same thing I am, and I agree. You need to vote no, because there are too many unanswered questions for the citizens of this county who pay taxes. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And if there's anybody else in the room, you have an opportunity to come to the podium and speak during this public time. All right, is there anyone online?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I know we all did receive a letter. Do I have a volunteer to read that? It was requested to be read into the record. You mind reading it?
This message is from Kelly Lewis at 10436 Hudson Road, King George, Virginia. My name is Kelly Lewis. I'm writing regarding the proposed tax amendment to downzone agriculturally zoned land in King George. Please read my entire comment to the public hearing that will be held today. I've lived in King George my entire life. I'm proud to serve our community as a teacher in King George County schools. As a lifelong resident and landowner, I'm deeply concerned and frankly afraid of the far-reaching implications this downsizing would have, not only for the county, but my family and neighbors as well. Let me be clear. I urge you to say no to any form of downzoning. There is no credible data or justification to support these changes, which would effectively take value and rights from the very property owners who have built their lives here. Please do not compromise. Any and all downzoning is a loss for families, for farmers, and for the future of King George. Please remember that what's being affected is not just land, it's people. It's not just about parcels and lines on a map, but about dreams and values. It's not just about parcels and lines on a map, but about dreams, investments, and generations of work and hope. I'm asking you to protect these people, protect their rights, protect their futures. Thank you for your time in considering the real human impact behind this decision. Sincerely, Kelly Lewis.
All right. Thank you. So, that's the last one. I'm going to close the open public comment period for this hearing, and then if there are no other comments from staff, I'll close the public hearing. I close this public hearing, and we can discuss our thoughts and concerns about this. Go ahead, Mr. Kendrick.
All right. So, I certainly appreciate the comments I've heard from the speakers this evening, and I think they're valid. I will make a few comments, though. There is a comprehensive plan in effect right now. The fact that we're going to consider modifying it and rewriting it in the next year or so doesn't mean that the current one doesn't have value and isn't worth still following until a new one's in place. That plan has always stated that, you know, they wanted to restrict major development into certain development areas. And the last time we did this, we worked very hard at defining those areas, and we actually enlarged several of them. The current plan also talks about maintaining the rural value, or the rural atmosphere of the county. I don't necessarily see that being in opposition to the idea of downsizing. Personally, I'm not a big fan of downsizing. I won't sit here and swear that I fully appreciate exactly what the Board of Supervisors is trying to accomplish, but I can't actually sit here and tell them what I anticipate as unintended consequences from downsizing. Zoning has always been a legitimate way for counties and areas in the entire country to manage growth. That is the stated purpose of this from the Board of Supervisors. I also know it's reversible in the future. If we rewrite the comprehensive plan, and the consensus is that we want to make some changes to our zoning areas and how much growth we're trying to encourage or discourage in the county, then we have the ability to come back in a year, six months, 18 months, whatever, and change it and move it back. Like I said, I'm not a big fan of downzoning. I'm also not a big fan of changing the numbers very frequently, but it's doable. You know, in terms of the Board of Supervisors, I get, I've listened to them speak, they've talked to us individually in a joint session, and they expressed their desire to do this to limit growth, to not encourage development that will add to the infrastructure needs of the county. I won't say I'm 100% in agreement with it, but at this point, I'm not willing to turn to the Board of Supervisors and say it has no value and will be bad for all these reasons that I can enumerate. So, I'm probably inclined to, at least in the short term, agree with this and see if it has the desired impact. It will not stop development. If there's a 100-acre parcel of land out there that somebody wants to develop, it can still be developed. It will just have fewer houses and larger lots, and more than likely, much higher price per house site. But, you know, I sit here and I'm not willing to say I'm smarter than the Board of Supervisors. So, it's not the most appealing thing I've seen come before me in the years I've sat up here, but I can understand what's driving it. So, due respect to the folks who spoke against it, I realize that developers, or anybody thinking of developing, or anybody owning a large parcel that they're thinking of turning over to a developer, yeah, it's going to impact them. But, the overall good of the county is what we're supposed to be about, not the individual profitability of a piece of land owned by an individual. So, with some hesitation, I'm probably going to vote to approve this.
Thank you. Mr. DeCore?
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Let me ask the staff. I see this last month, we had four applications for major subdivisions, which even accepted. Would you say that's on pace, exceptionally high, exceptionally low? What's our annual? And how many units are, housing units are involved?
I don't have an entire overview of data in front of me right now. I can definitely find that for you, but in general, we've been seeing a lot of major subdivisions that were a result of a higher court approving them after they were appealing to previous rezonings. So, that's currently what's on our docket, and the majority of them are appeals from previous years. I won't say that there are no new major subdivisions in. I have a couple, but I would say more than half of them were appeals to the higher court.
About half, okay. Because one of my concerns was during this open period where we're discussing this, it may stimulate applications that are trying to get grandfathered in before the changes go into effect. Our growth rate, we are in the top 10% of counties in the state for growth. The arc of the curve is, as you would expect, being, you know, purpling ex-urban, spot, spreading development. Development pressure is imminent, and it's going to be immense. Managing that, I think, is the Board of Supervisors' number-one responsibility. I'd also argue for managing conservation, preservation with equal emphasis and vigor. However, the, I have yet to receive a single positive, supportive communication or conversation with any of my Dahlgren district people, and we are, Dahlgren is not a large, open, not the largest open space area, as you know, but even the people who wouldn't be affected, people who are already on two or five-acre lots are against it. So, I see very little support. Most of the criticism has been, most of the objection has been to the changing the lot size, downsizing, I mean, upsizing the size of the lots for development. So, I'm inclined to recommend that we consider leaving the lot size definitions as is and going with the other language that is flatly developed for, and that's a significant barrier to development, both physically and financially, requiring state roads and managing the number of inlets and exits. I'd also urge consideration of putting a tax. If you want less of something, you tax it, but, you know, in major developments, to disincentivize it. But, the Board of Supervisors is right, something's got to be done. You know, I don't know if we want to set a growth target. They say it's not about growth rate, which we're at 1.42 now. You know, most, the state average is down around .8. We don't want negative growth, but we want sustainable, manageable growth. And balancing conservation and preservation and open space with housing demands drives us to the comp plan, and what are we going to do about doing? More high-density housing, less incentives for, I don't want to say McMansions in a pejorative way, but they're not entry-level housing for base scientists and engineers that want to raise their kids here. So, I'm inclined to not support the ordinance as currently written and recommend deleting the changes to the lot size requirements for A1, A2, and A3.
Thank you. Mr. Nicely? Did you have any comments?
Yes, I have several comments. Can you hear my audio fine?
Yes.
I'll try to go down through this in an orderly fashion. I have got real concerns with the lot size changing. I will go ahead and agree. I do like the suggestion that we split this change and address the entrance and exits portion of the change and separate that from the lot size change. I could get behind making the changes to the entrances and exits. I do have real concerns about changing and impacting people's property rights. People have bought property in this county for many, many years. I am one of them. I do not plan to currently subdivide the land that I own, but the future purchaser of my land may wish to do that, and these lot sizes would prevent that. There are three or four building sites on my property. I don't plan to do it, so I'm not speaking for my personal self, but I think this impacts a lot of people's plans for how much land they bought in the county for particular purposes, and we're going to pull the rug out from under what they may have for long-term plans for their retirement or on their elderly years, that they are expecting to need this money, and we're going to pull that out from under them. There's a lot of complicating and interacting aspects to this about value. Yes, your value per acre is probably going to go down, because generally, larger lots cost less per acre, but if you have to buy more acreage, the price of buying that lot is going to probably almost double, because you've got to buy twice as much land or three times as much land, depending on which zoning you're in. So, this is going to have a lot of complicating things in terms of access of people getting into the county. I've got real concerns about how we're going to, the general term people use is gentrify the county. The only people that are going to be able to avoid, that are going to be able to afford to buy in here are the McMansions. They're going to be big lots, big values, and we're not going to have any place for our children or the youth of the county whose parents may not own land that they can subdivide to be able to buy a house. The value of buying into this county is already very high, and it's going to skyrocket if all we have is large lots that are available to anybody. The other complicating part with this is how does this play together with the ongoing reassessment of our property values? What is the county going to do to assess the value of my land that I own? We won't have comps. We won't have ideas about what the value of our property is in any correct and valuable meaningful way. So, we're going to get reassessed without having any data. So, we're going to get taxed differently than we should. Everybody's all worried about their tax rates. I don't know what it's going to do. Maybe someone else that's in real estate that's on the panel there, maybe Sean, can help me understand the interactions of this, but this gets really complicated, and I don't think in the middle of a reassessment time, this is the proper time to do it. Next point. I have asked for a while now about how many non-conforming lots do we already have in the county? How many non-conforming lots will we create immediately because people bought with the old lots, you know, had a lot that was conforming but is now not conforming in their particular zoning? What are we going to do about those non-conforming lots? How do we manage this? Who assesses that? Who enforces this? I am also, while I understand the concern that people have and the desire people have to have special exceptions for family, I think that's going to also turn into an incredibly complicated management and tracking process. Who's going to enforce someone? And I don't mean to have any condescending or nefarious things. I know there are statements in the ordinance about this, but what's to stop someone from, quote, "selling" a lot to their family member, and then the family member building rental property on it? How do we track who is really using the property? There's, and how do we track, you know, that for 15 years? If this becomes a temporary measure, and then it's not a temporary measure, and we change the lot size, and we change the lot size back, we all know this is going to get really complicated to track. Final thing that I have is this really needs to, I understand Mr. Kendrick's comment about we do already have a comprehensive plan, but if we really, really want to take a look at managing where growth is, we need to do that in the comprehensive plan. These changes would have not, would not have prevented Hopyard, which is what everybody looks at and says, oh, my gosh, we don't want that to happen. Hopyard was rezoned. We control this by not rezoning the major subdivisions when they come before the board, not by making short-term, even potentially, short-term changes. So, I, while I understand the Board of Supervisors' concerns about trying to have utilities catch up, and they think that our growth rate is high, our growth rate is significantly less than it was 10 years ago in the county, and this seems to be a solution looking for a problem. I am obviously not inclined to support this amendment unless we separate out the entrance and exits and address that separately. I really cannot endorse this lot size change.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nicely. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, yes. Well, in principle, when we speak about preserving the rural character of the county, I personally am a strong proponent of doing that. I want to be clear about that. As it happens, the land that I own in King George County is in a subdivision where it can't be subdivided any further, so I don't have a, I don't really have a dog in this hunt with respect to a personal interest of any kind. So, what I will say is, I think purely objective from that sense. I think that the, again, the troubling aspect of this for me is also the minimum lot size increases. I think essentially, that's a solution that outsizes the problem to a certain extent. I do appreciate the need to have intelligent growth in the county, smart growth, moderate growth in the county. You can't avoid growth altogether, nor do I think we necessarily want to avoid growth altogether. But, it's a little, it strikes me as somewhat heavy-handed and even a circumspect way of getting to the issue of trying to perhaps slow growth in the county. I'd rather see, if you want to do something, I'd rather see you do a more direct method as essentially looking at increasing fees and licensing and permitting costs directly on subdivision sizes, if you feel like, rather than go about it this way, which I think could even have unintended negative consequences, particularly when you come back around to the concept of reassessing property values. If you do this upsizing of the lots, well, then maybe the actual acreage comes down per acre, the value of the acreage comes down, and then the tax assessment, we may even find ourselves with a shortfall in tax collection by doing this, which I certainly don't think was the intention when they set out to do this. So, long story short, I do not think that we're experiencing anything like runaway growth in this county. From my research, it's about From my research, it's about 0.6% per year, which is nothing to be, you know, lighting our hair on fire over. So, again, if we were to take out the section on increasing minimum lot sizes and focus on more direct ways to attack the problem, again, through fees, permitting, et cetera, road ingress egress access, that's the smarter, more even-handed way, I think, of going about it. So with that said, I would be, in its current form, I would tend not to support the ordinance change.
Thank you, Mr. Pallavani.
I would say we're lucky to have so much wisdom in the room, and I heard a lot of comments from you guys that I'm thinking of, and we're not hearing anybody speaking for this. I've talked to a lot of people recently. This idea is wildly unpopular. It's rooted, it's rooted in the idea that we were getting ready to have to build a new elementary school. The school board's come out and said, we've got some headroom in the elementary school. So they're not sure why, but the attendance is lower in that than what looked like was trending. I'm looking at the report as part of our package. It was just a general indication of the inspection. So on October 21, we had 504 inspections. 22, we had 511. 23, we had 628. And then 24, we had 386. And October 25, we only had 346. So that appears to be a downward trend. And in fact, even this, even this month, which I think is a slow month for building, but you're seeing, you're seeing a fall off of that. Another important thing is the value it's going to have for our taxes. You know, the market, the market is going to react immediately. You know, if they approve that, then property that was worth this much money is now not worth that. The market effect is immediate. It will trickle down and through the Real Estate Equalization Board, they're going to start to see that property is not worth what it was, and you're going to see our tax base diminish. So in effect, we'll have to raise taxes to keep the same amount of money. I think it's a net effect. I think it's a bad idea to change a global variable to fix a specific problem. Gary had mentioned, and I think this is, this is wisdom, that we can address this in the comprehensive plan, and it's scheduled, it's to start almost, well, two months from now, we're going to start that. And I think we can tackle this problem in a more elegant way. The most cogent argument, though, and Mrs. Payne, I hear you, we're talking about property rights. Okay? This is what makes America great. And in light of anything else, we have, we have property rights. We've all agreed to this set of rules that we're playing by, and to change that midstream is unfair, and it's un-American, in my opinion. You know, it's what makes our country great is, you know, our property rights. So that's all I had. I'm definitely not in support of this. But I am, I am in support of putting the roads back in there. That was taken out as an error. And I think that we, I would support a bifurcation of this, relieving the lot sizes the same and fixing the roads that we had taken out by accident before.
All right. Thank you. I also, I see this as a legitimate tool for slowing growth. However, I don't necessarily think that it's the right time for it and what's best for the entirety of King George County right now. I think there are other tools that are going to be available to us very soon. And a blanket downzoning is something that I'm not in favor of. However, I think we are in agreement about the family subdivision and the changes to the access points. And so what I think we want to do is have an amended motion. Are you offering to make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just, I would add one other thing is that a committee was established to figure out if this was a good or an error or not, and we, we met very often and took a lot of input from the, from the public. And the ZOTAC committee recommended we don't do this. They recommended we do put the roads back in. So with that, I'll make.
So let's have some, can you, you haven't made a motion yet, have you?
Not yet.
Okay. Let's have some discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
My impression here is that, you know, this is going to be, my impression here is that this is going to be a little more complicated than simply cutting out this table and saying the rest of it is okay, kind of thing. I do think this has to go back for maybe another round of wordsmithing on this. So I'm not sure if that's the intention, is just to simply pull out the objectionable bit and run with the rest of it. I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm suggesting we need to send this back to the drawing board.
So because I think there is some, you know, we're in favor of the parts that we like, and I think there's some agreement to maybe making some changes, should we discuss? I'm.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, just a minute, Mr. Nicely.
We can do this one of two ways. We can, you know, go to number one, move to adopt with the following recommended changes. Or number two, we could say we moved to.
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable recommendation due to the following factors. And then we can elaborate and say there was a general consensus, if there is, on maintaining the lot sizes as is and exploring, you know, the access point and state road, the V-dot restrictions from AG.
So are you saying, you think that the access points, we're not in agreement on that?
I don't know if Mr. Fox is.
I am in agreement on that, but I think it's, it's not necessarily the only thing we can, we can leave it with. I think they perhaps ought to relook at a more direct approach to when developers come in, looking at the fee schedule for permits, licenses, approvals, et cetera. None of that is in here.
So I think we're missing one thing is that this is agricultural land. So any developer coming to us wanting to do a residential development is going to be asking for a zoning change, right? The last thing we want to do is do any advanced zoning changes because that's the only leverage we have. Otherwise, it's by right. Right now, a developer can, well, with this proposed change, a developer can come in and do three-acre lots by right if we agree with this change. Now, I don't know how many of them want to do three-acre lots because that's not how they maximize their profit. But we still have the ability to look at it from all different perspectives, you know, and say, no, it's not in the best interest of the county. I don't even want to fool with the number of entrances and exits out of a parcel. I just think that's low-level things that we could handle as part of a zoning application change.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Nicely. I didn't mean to leave you waiting that long.
Oh, that's perfectly fine. I mean, we have to, we have to, Mr. Kendrick just points out. Did you have something else, sir?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. So I guess one possibility, if we wanted to discuss the access points, one possibility would be to sever this and only approve the modifications to the ordinance in section 1036. I believe that's where all of the access point aspects are contained. I believe if we do not modify the lot sizes, there is no need to have the modifications to the family section. All the family, the modifications in the family section of the ordinance, we're all about allowing them to use the old lot sizes. So if we don't modify the lot sizes, we don't even need to touch that section of the ordinance. So we could have a, we could, if we, once we get through some further discussion, simply agree to modify the, or to agree to the mods to section 10-3-6.
Okay.
I have questions about those sections.
I would like to express them.
One possibility to put on the motion.
Sorry. I would like to express that I do think we need to put the access point interior road language back in there. That's very important. So at the end of the day, we need to come up with a motion and have it sectioned in and voted on. I thought we were almost in agreement, and you're right, Mr. Decortes, it could be a, it could be a modified or an unfavorable.
I'll just point out that something that is definitely popular is changing the roads. So what that means is when a developer gets a subdivision, they can't just have every house dump out on the road. And these areas that we're talking about are agriculture. It's disruptive to the road, and it's something that we never allowed, we hadn't allowed before in the past, and it was an oversight when we revamped this subdivision ordinance that that got out. And there's a subdivision in Shiloh that they got approved, and that's, I think that's part of what sparked all this in regards to downzoning. And that also makes it a lot easier for a developer just to come in by a farm and just chop it up and makes it very easy to do, but it's disruptive to the community when they do it that way. So I definitely think we should put the roads back in. We can always bring it back and cut on it and figure out a better way. But one way we could just do it is just say we're not changing the lot sizes in table, table 4-2. We can, we can forward this forward with a favorable recommendation with the following changes to table 4-2. A1, 10 acres. A2, 2 acres. A3, 1 acre.
Did you just make a motion?
No, but this is discussion to see if.
Sort of lean towards Mr. Decortes' second option there of not in favor, but et cetera. I'm leaning towards Mr. Decortes' second option that he outlined. Mr. Decortes, would you like to reiterate what you had said there, an unfavorable?
Move to forward the amendment to the board of supervisors with unfavorable recommendation for the following reasons.
Correct. And then let them take on the task of just improving this statutory construction a bit more. In my view, it just needs a bit more work. It's a little too rough hue in this moment.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, but regardless of what we send back to the board of supervisors, once we send something back, they're free to do whatever they want. They don't have to modify it. They don't have to pay attention to our recommendations. They can just say, hey, we heard you. We disagree with you. Here it is. It's enacted. I mean, we can't lose sight of the fact that we're a body that makes a recommendation, not a decision. So if we're going to send it back, then yeah, we could, I agree with Mr. Decortes, just say we don't agree, and here's the things that we don't agree with, and here's the things we do agree with. And that way, it's on the record what our opinion is. But I don't want us to think that, oh, we're going to say, no, but these are the changes we'd like to see, and actually think that's the way it's going to happen. I mean, it would be nice if it is, but we don't have that kind of control.
Our duty is to make the best recommendation we can.
It is, and that's the reason I'm saying, I don't think we approve it.
Do we have a motion?
Subject to these ideas. If you don't like it, let's just say, no, we don't like it, and here's the reasons we don't like it. We tried to express that to them during our joint meeting.
We come to the same point, I think, just saying in different ways. I agree.
I think we need to put the road. Right. The reasons for disapproval, I think, are the next subject for discussion amongst the The reasons for disapproval, I would include Sean's remark about we need to have language regulating access points.
That's here. That's before us.
We have.
We can, we can.
We have, that was all rewritten.
It's all nailed down.
That's in here. The only thing that, the only thing that really, I think, we all agreed on was the density. So we'll take that out. That'll put the roads back in and, you know, got to go.
Yeah. The more I think about it, I think reasons for disapproval is the lot sizes are incompatible with community sentiment, community objection, and we believe this can be, the goals can be accomplished without adjusting the lot sizes. As Ian says, just let them.
I agree with everything you just said, and maybe just give them a little bit of thought on our part. Again, we're, could, to include, but not limited to perhaps relooking at the access points and possibly, you know, possibly a more direct application of regulation in the, in the area of permits and licenses. You know, that's the direct way to deal with things, right? Don't go circumventing around.
So I will say at this point in the game.
In other words, it's not a recommendation on what they should put into this thing, but things they might want to consider before they go forward.
I think we've been looking at this for a year. We've had the chance to talk to the board of supervisors firsthand. We've had the opportunity to work with staff, ask our questions, make recommendations. And I think.
This is our recommendation, yeah. This moment.
Well, we've had plenty of opportunity before tonight to say that permitting, see, you're bringing up something to me that's completely different, and I'm not sure how that relates to our ordinances. This is an application to change our ordinances of the county.
You don't have to say anything about it if you don't.
And we can agree or disagree about parts of it, but I'm not sure about bringing.
I don't think we're saying anything definitively here. We're not recommending language on the ingress and egress.
Yes, it's in, it was in, it's in.
You want to.
I'm sorry.
Recommend the exact.
Do you want to bring that back up, please?
Okay.
The language changes are in the ordinance.
So, yeah, the three main sections that were proposed to be changed were the lot sizes in the first table, the family subdivision stuff, and Mr. Nicely is right, if you don't change the lot sizes, you don't need to put the section in the family subdivision and then the section about access. So these are the proposed changes that we've been talking about in the yellow.
Can you go to the word, not the, not this table, but there's some highlighted words that explain the access points?
And the V-dot pieces.
I think it's up further.
Yeah, further up. There you go.
Right there. So it basically states that all the subdivisions have to be served by interior roads.
No, I understand. I'm on board with that. I'd rather, in that case, just sort of send it back to them and let them do, let them, I'm not going to support striking this in any way. I'm fine with that. I'd rather just leave it than, for the most part, rather than making nitpicking, regular, you know, suggestions here or there, just send it back to them with the thought that we don't want to see that upsizing of the lot sizes essentially.
Okay. So I think.
The issue is, standard, is that our current ordinance lacks that language.
That's correct. And an error, too. That's an error.
Could be considered oversight. It could be considered an oversight. So we have to craft our communication, say we fully support the correction of the omission on the V-dot and the access points. the correction of the omission on, on the V-dot and the access points.
So we either fully su- support this amended, or we don't support it for the following reasons.
Right, so we can, we can support it amended, whereas we don't change the density, but we, we put the roads back in. I think, is everybody in agreement that the roads should be there? I think is- The roads-
And access point.
Oh yeah, I think the road definitely needs to be in there. I just-
I got a motion.
I do have a question.
That's the end of it, though.
Madam, Madam Chair, i- if, if I understand everything that the commission is saying, and it seems to be pretty unanimous across the board, just from a procedure standpoint, I believe you could do number two and just note that you agree with-
10-3-6.
10-3-6 and disagree with changes to 4-4-1 and 10-2-4.
Thank you, sir.
That would be perfectly acceptable.
Thanks. I made it that.
Appreciate that.
Good job.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Nicely.
Mr. Nicely, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, this is, probably isn't going to change my, my, my position on this, but I would, I would like someone to clarify for me exactly what the second half of table 10-1 is really trying to say. Are we saying that if you put in a major subdivision with six to 35 lots, you have to provide one access to your neighbor next to you? I don't understand connections to adjoining lots and what that-
I can help answer that.
The top part I understand. Thank you.
Um, so in order to create interconnectedness, um, the subdivision has to have a potential, that is an access connection for a potential future development or, uh, ties into, uh, a development that's already on an adjoining lot. And, um, it's, it's very hard to accomplish sometimes with, um, the amount of creeks and rivers we have, but, uh, they can actually come before us and, and ask for exceptions on that.
It was so, it, it was just to provide interconnectivity between traffic that is only gonna be inside neighboring subdivisions without getting out on a major road. That was the original thought, so.
But if an adjoining farm, if an adjoining farmer in the lot next door that's getting a major subdivision objects to having an access onto his lot-
His lot wouldn't be impacted, but the developer would provide the possibility for an access road. That, you see, you see like traffic circles at the back, on the backside of a subdivision that ha- already have a curb cut to allow a road to be built to connect the two. If the adjoining property ever got developed, that developer would be required to figure out how to attach to it.
Okay, thanks. So this is, this is much like in some places in the county. You see breaks in, in the, uh, guardrails with the, what looks like a road access, or you say a curb cut, but there's no street that actually connects to it. You're saying the developers got to plan for a road that goes on to someone next to them.
Well, for instance, like school bus could come in at one end of like three adjoining subdivisions and pick up kids all through it without having to get back out on the main road other than just one time when he exited, that kind of stuff. It, it was a thought a long time ago.
All right, thank you. So do we have a motion?
Take a, I'll take a stab at it. You'll probably vote no, but I think this is the cleanest way to say exactly what everybody wants. Is that I move to adopt resolution number PC-18-25 to, to forward ordinance amendments. OA-02-25 with the following changes to table 4-2. The minimum area for lots, A1 to be 10 acres, A2 to be 2 acres, and A3 to be 1 acres to the King George County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
That wouldn't be changing anything.
All right, seeing as there's no second, do we have another motion?
By, by doing it that way, that puts in front of them our recommendation for the roads and not the, the, um, the density change, which our, our role is just to make the recommendation based on the public input, which is very clear. It's been clear the whole way not to change the density.
So were, were we happy with the, the way council stated this? We were happy with how council stated this? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair. I was happy with the way you stated it.
Could you restate that and we can ask for a motion as stated?
Yeah.
I, I can take a stab.
I believe if you follow along on page seven of the packet, that you could, if that is the will of the commission, I don't want to speak for anyone, but you could put forth a motion that says, I move to forward ordinance amendment OA-02-25 to the King George County Board of Supervisors with an unfavorable recommendation for the following reasons. A, we are in favor of changes to section 10-3-6 as stated. B, we are not in favor of changes to 4-4-1 and 10-2-4.
Second.
No, it's, sorry. Do we have, all right, so, Mr. Fox, did you just make a motion?
May I?
Yes, you may.
I don't want anything going-
As stated, so moved as stated by, by staff.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, a roll call, sorry. Yes, we'll do roll call.
Count, is counsel as stated?
Madam, Madam Chair, bef- before taking roll call, I would just check and make sure that there's no further discussion needed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't think so.
I have to.
But you have to say what's-
Any further discussion? No, thank you.
Okay, we'll do this by roll call. Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Decortes?
Aye.
Ms. Flatley?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Nicely?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, we have no items deferred from previous meetings. Uh, we moved our special presentation to the beginning of our meeting. We have no old business, so we move on to new business presentation application Z-2025-005, sorry, 304 Powhatan Road Solar Special Exception.
Sorry. And, um, Kelly, you said just to say next for-
Yes, yes. Um, this is Cara. She'll, she'll introduce herself, but I just, uh, for Chris in the back, you guys have control. She's just gonna direct you in to change the slides.
Yes, my apologies. I'm gonna say next slide a lot. So apologies in advance. Um, good evening and thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff for allowing us the time to present our five-megawatt community solar, Powhatan Road Community Solar Project this evening ahead of our special exception hearing. My name is Cara Romaine. I'm a project development manager with ESA. I've been developing solar projects in Virginia for nearly five years. Next slide, please. In the room with me tonight is our landowner Larry Carr, who has lived and farmed in this community for decades. It's been a true honor getting to know Larry and his wife Patty and learning how this small solar project can help alleviate financial pressures and help them maintain ownership of this generational farm. Also joining me tonight is, uh, Justin Vandembrock, co-owner of ESA. Justin has worked in the solar industry for about 15 years, and he helped co-found ESA back in 2017. Um, ESA is a development and engineering company based in central Florida. We develop utility-scale solar, battery storage projects, and community solar projects like the one we're presenting tonight. Next slide, please. So community solar allows households to receive electricity from Dominion Energy to subscribe to a portion of a local solar project. Kind of like, um, in the picture up there on the left, um, a portion of this, of your subscription is just a portion of panels on the solar project. So, um, those who sign up to community solar save around 10% on their electricity bills every month, even if they can't install solar on their house or their roofs. Um, so in this example here, um, is, uh, an example that Justin kindly lent us of his electricity bill last month. He lives in Washington DC and subscribes to a community solar project up there. So his, uh, bill last month was a total of $331, and his solar project subscription saved him 10%, so about $33 off of his bill just for signing up. So, next slide, please. So before zooming in on the exact project location, this is a map here, of course, of all the voting precincts in King George County. Our project is in the heart of the James Madison District. Uh, next, please. So there's three ways into our project site, so, you know, three major ways into our site. You have from the west, Route 3, and from 301 North or South. Next, please. Zooming into the site, you can see the project location outlined in red. To the west, you have Port Conway Road, and to the east, you have Millbank, and of course, Kings Highway, um, also further to the east. Uh, next, please. And just as I mentioned, there are three major ways into the site. They're again highlighted here, however, primarily for this project because of the infrastructure upgrades that have been done to Port Conway Road with Hop Yard Landing. We would anticipate and expect that traffic and construction would enter via, uh, Route 3 or Port Conway Road. Next, please. So Larry's property is a large property. It's over 150 acres, and he has a lot going on there with farming activity, with cattle grazing, horses. They live on site as well, and there's a robust forest to the south. And our project will only take up an eight, an 80%, 87% of that will remain unchanged, and our project will just take up 13% or about 24 acres of 157. Next, please. And just for further perspective, it's smaller than the nearby horse track on the, um, adjoining property. Next, please. Okay, so now we're gonna go into a site tour, starting on the western corner of the property. Next slide, please. Here, we'll start with some visual renderings. This is what the property, the existing conditions are currently. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a visual rendering of what the project will look like at planting or after construction. We will be required to plant a 30-foot wide landscape buffer. Um, the buffer will be made up of trees six feet tall at planting on day one, staggered rows with shrubs, um, understory trees, all native species. And, um, on the previous slide, a couple slides ago, I, you might have noticed that there was a 2.5 acre in there, and that is the number of acres that we will be planting, uh, of new species around this project. Um, I also just want to note on this slide, um, the panels will be set back 100 feet from the road and adjoining properties, and the local three-phase line right there on the screen, that is the line that we will be connecting to that runs to the existing substation a couple of miles away. Um, next slide, please. After about five years of growth, we would expect that the trees would grow to be about 13 to 15 feet, and, um, the panels would, would be largely concealed from view. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, moving on to the middle of the, the site in the tour. Next slide, please. Run through some key components. So the project will be split up into two array sections, one on the northern side of Powhatan Road and one on the south side of Powhatan Road. We will provide access to both arrays, and that will consist of a 20-foot wide site entrance that will, uh, that has been designed based off of V-dot feedback, but will comply with all of their standards as well as local standards as well. Um, next slide, please. For each array, we will have an equipment pad that will house the, uh, transformer and inverters for the panels. We've placed these towards the, of course, they will be behind the fence for, you know, safety and, and those sorts of precautions, but we've placed them there so that they're away from, you know, any residential structures or, um, you know, folks that might be around. So to minimize noise and, and make sure we're adhering to local ordinance requirements pertaining to noise. Uh, next, please. And this just kind of shows again a, you know, top-down view of the landscape, planted landscape areas that I showed in the visual rendering earlier. I also do want to just note that we will be utilizing, uh, the green area to the north where there's robust, uh, forests, and of course, robust forest to the south will be utilized as buffer to conceal the project as well. Next, please. Again, just, this is highlighting the panel area. As I noted before, panels will be set back 100 feet from property lines and roads. We'll be utilizing a single-axis tracker for this project where the panels rotate and follow the sun throughout the day. And, uh, the panel will, panels will be around 11 feet at their tallest, uh, tilt. Next, please. Around the panels, we will have, um, a fence around both sections. For this project, we plan to utilize woven wire fencing, um, that will be eight feet tall, and the fencing will be 50 feet from the road and prop, adjoining property lines. Next, please. And then this is, this is highlighting the point of interconnection where the project will connect to that local three-phase distribution line. Uh, the project will, the power will be generated on that power line that feeds local homes and businesses. Likewise, go to that substation that feeds power to the local community, so it will not be going on the large transmission lines that, you know, send power off, uh, regionally. Next, please. These photos are just kind of helping to paint a picture of those, um, kind of like 2D top-down images that I was just talking about. So, uh, the single-axis tracker, as I noted, we'll be using for this project. This photo on the left shows that racking system that helps tilt the panels throughout the day. Um, of course, the, the solar panels as well, what they'll look like. And then we will be planting native pollinator-friendly ground cover that helps with, you know, building soil stability and nutrients and, um, helping local species as well. Um, and then, as I mentioned, the equipment pad, that's the top-right picture. That's kind of what that area will look like with the transformer, control box, the string inverters that kind of takes all the power generated from the solar panels and then sends it to the three-phase line. And then, uh, bottom right is a, just a better photo of the fence that we will put around the project. It kind of gives a better rural, um, you know, feel to, to the project and kind of fit in with the rural landscape. and kind of fit in with the rural landscape. Uh, next, please. And last up on the tours, just the other side of the visual rendering. Uh, next slide, please. So on the east side of the project, this is what the existing conditions look like. And on the next slide, what the, what we anticipate the project to look like day one after planting. Again, six feet tall, while we do expect that there might be some visual impacts to folks driving down the road. We do expect that, um, on the next slide, within at least five years of growth, we expect the trees in the buffer to largely conceal the project. Next, please. And Justin, would you like to take instruction and decommission? You got this part.
I'm so proud of Kara. I've worked, she's worked for me since she was an intern five years ago and it's great to see your growth. Yeah, construction process on, on these projects, I mean, you all have had a lot of presentations lately about it. Some of these are some projects that we're building right now and actually in Alabama. But first process is really just building your access roads, establish, access roads, establishing your fencing around the perimeter and making sure you got good ground cover before you break ground, as you can see in the second. And the third photo for those were taken the past couple of weeks. When you got good ground cover on your site, that helps manage those heavy rainfall events so that you don't create stormwater runoff and sedimentation and erosion on the site that bleeds into the, the small county road, especially Powhatan Road, which is a relatively small, not fully country road, but you know, one step above a country dirt road. So, um, you know, that's really important to us. Luckily with the site conditions right now, leveling the site out, seating, establishing that will be no problem. Then you shake out the piles, you get your delivery, lay your piles out in the location. They're going to be driven to the ground, run your pile drivers to hit those down. That's the loudest part of the construction process. But two pile drivers can knock out this site in like three weeks or less. And we've accepted some and proposed some conditions around time of doing the pile driving because we understand from being on sites that, you know, limiting those hours and being mindful about when you're driving piles is really important when you want to, when you're going through that construction process. After that, you, you go ahead and you assemble across those piles, the torque tubes, which are going to basically move to track the panels. Lay down your pallets of solar panels and then do your mounting and panel assembly and wiring. And then you energize the system with Dominion Energy. So we have an interconnection agreement with Dominion Energy on the local distribution line. And so that agreement specifies all the technical details and the safety precautions and the schedule and who does what. You can go to the next slide. This is always a really important part of these projects and frankly, having been in the industry long enough and very happy that Virginia has the right statutes in place to protect counties and protect communities. Projects are required to put together a financial guarantee, usually in the form of a surety bond that's put in place to cover the future removal costs. So decommissioning plan estimates, engineering analysis is done to forecast out what labor rates are going to be, what material costs are going to be, and they're required to be updated every five years. Having built personally myself, I started as a construction worker in the solar industry 15 years ago and worked in the field for five years before getting my engineering degree and deciding I didn't want to work in the field anymore. Building, uh, decommissioning a solar project is just building a solar project backwards. I mean, you're just unboltin' the equipment, making sure you're managing all your electrical and your wires, pulling them in, spooling them in, taking those to, to get some monetary value for scrap. It's taking your solar panels, stacking them onto pallets, hauling them away, making sure they're managed and disposed properly. You can't just drop them into a municipal landfill. You have to take them to an advancement landfill or advanced waste management facility. And then ultimately we have to store, restore the site. And so that's what we're obliged to do in our lease agreement, which is a matter of leveling out the site and, and seeding the site and getting that reestablished. Removing the actual piles is pretty simple because there, you're not, the foundation is not concrete and you're not laying down rebar. It's not like as if you were going to try to remove the slab of a single-family home. It's a matter of taking essentially forklift-type heavy machinery and putting ball and chain and pulling upward force straight up on the Y-axis. And that, that pull is what ultimately, with the right amount of force, will just slide them, slide them up. And then, you know, it's a matter of just keeping organized, bundling your equipment and hauling them off. Most of this, 90% of a project is, is steel, aluminum and copper on a project. There's a lot of salvage value associated with it. And you can go to the next slide. This is just an excerpt from the application, which will likely be in the staff report, I assume, around the cost estimates and the operators and labor rates and trucking and supervisors and just getting into the granularity of the decommissioning process. You can go to the next slide. I can wrap this up here. You know, started this company in 2017 and it's consistently, when we're developing projects, it's important that we cultivate relationships with community-based organizations. I mean, it's great to, great to support our landowners and help them, you know, exhibit their property rights and, and have long-term reliable revenue on these projects, but it's also good to be good neighbors. And so one of the things that we did was sponsor Fall Festival and Love Thy Neighbor Food Pantry. And then at a focus group on September 3rd, it was communicated to us that as part of community engagement, supporting King George High School with their apprenticeship programs for local trades is really, really important. So Kara and Ernest from our team have been working with them. It's actually a $60,000 sponsorship over three years, $20,000 each year to support their apprenticeship program. And so we've submitted a community benefit agreement to, to the teacher and the stakeholders who are over there and they're reviewing it and looking into the details. But, um, you know, it's, when I, when I was growing up, the trades was not really an option for, for me. No one talked about the trades. I was failing college and so I had to get into the trades and ended up building projects and luckily got to build a foundation of construction skills that ultimately led to business skills and growing a company. More, more youth need that opportunity, especially in our rural communities. And so, um, super happy to be able to do that. We do a lot of door knocking. We've knocked on all the doors that are in close proximity. If you've been to this site, it's, it's pretty rural. There's not a lot of like neighbors so much. And we've redesigned our site. So we've made changes from our very first site plan when I first talked to Larry in 2019 and took me around on his four-wheeler on the site to what it was, what we presented at the focus group, to even what it is now, the site has changed three separate, two changes to the, this now third version based on feedback from stakeholders. So that's a big part of how we, how we run our company and how we develop our projects. Cause you can't just show up to a hearing and think your first shot is going to be the one that gets approved. It's a little naive. So anyways, I think that's the last slide. But yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Kara. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendrick, you have questions?
Just a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
Any tree removal?
No.
It's already cleared? The site you're going to construct on is already cleared?
Yeah, so the area that we're putting panels on is already cleared. It's just utilized for farming on, on the one side of the road. But for shading purposes, um, to the area of the south where that's forested, we might clear maybe like an acre just for shading purposes.
Okay.
Over the panels.
So you mentioned leveling as part of the construction. Is the site not already relatively flat?
It is very flat. It is.
Okay. You mentioned leveling. I'm just trying to understand what you were meaning by that. I would prefer that you follow the natural contour.
Yeah, that's the plan. That's, that's better anyways. I was, when I said leveling, that was related to when you're decommissioning, when you're pulling everything up and you're going to be creating dirt piles, not on the construction aspect. So this site, we don't have to level. We can follow the contours. That, that site is, is flat as a pancake.
Okay. Just how, how do you handle vegetation during the life of the project?
During the life of the project?
You, you talked about pollinators, but you know, you're not just going to let stuff grow because it'll get too big on you. So how are you handling it?
Oh, yeah. How are you going to manage the vegetation is going to be either grazing or mowing. I mean, we have to, we've started a, did we start the solar grazing committee yet? Okay. I know there was a woman who spoke at another project about grazing and she had interest in, in. Anyways, we're in some circles with her because we're part of the American Solar Grazing Association. So that's one aspect. I mean, what we are going to plant and what we're specifying and we're actually doing a test bed at my house right now is this, so cheesy, this like fuzz and buzz mix, which is like a, it, the thing about it's like people will propose pollinator habitats and show pretty photos of that and then they'll say we're grazing. Well, they may not realize that the thistles in a lot of those don't work well with the digestive system of sheep. And so you actually have to have the right mix of like rye and wheat and certain other things that are helpful for pollinators. So that's our plan is work with the extension, put it, put down the right ground cover, have it grazing ready, right? We don't have a grazing partner identified right now. It's kind of hard for grazers to build a business case on one small site unless they're already getting paid to graze other sites nearby. So sorry, long answer, but if, if not grazing, mowing.
Any, any chemical applications you anticipate?
No, not on that site. You wouldn't have to.
Okay.
If you had to do like something, it would be like in spots that are right up underneath the piles where the H piles are, you know, the piles that you drive in the ground, they're H piles. So they're kind of, when you're maintaining a site, those little nooks right there on the inside of the H are tough to reach with a mower and a weed whacker perfectly. So I've seen spot spraying in the past, but definitely nothing more, nothing greater than what's being applied under Ag.
So the actual collectors that you're putting up. I, yeah, educate me a little bit, what fluids are in those. I'm, I'm looking at, is there any environmental impact from the collectors themselves?
No, I mean, so our, this site has been designed under the polysilicon. I think maybe you're concerned about cadmium telleride solar panels, which are often associated with concerns around, well, if it breaks, will cadmium leak into the soil and create any sort of contaminated risk? Which is a whole nother discussion around, it's in a solid state, so that's not applicable. But no, it's a polysilicon solar panel. They're encapsulated. It's the standard solar panels that you would see on top of homes and commercial businesses. But basically they're, uh, the top layer is glass. On the next layer is going to be some encapsulate that's like a polymer-based encapsulate that basically sandwiches the solar cells, the solar cells. The max amount of chemical you can envision in there is the soldering in between those cells. Sometimes they're lead-based soldering, like they'll use silver, just like in most electronics. But it's fully encapsulated in glass, got a back sheet.
Just make sure you address it when you come back.
Yeah.
And the last thing is when you pull these support columns out at demolition, what do you do with the hole?
Yeah, you just have to fill dirt, dirt fill, like fill dirt normally.
Okay, you're just filling them?
Yeah, but it's pretty small. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Fox?
Actually, I travel Powhatan Road almost every day. I live not too far from there and I, I'm familiar with that site very well. And I personally think it's, I couldn't imagine a better site for what you're wanting to do. It's already dead flat. It's been farmed for ages. And I think you've probably chosen wisely there. Are you going to be doing some soil analysis pre-construction and then taking a baseline sampling of that for comparison at the end of this, end of the project life? For when you dismantle the project to see that the baseline is more or less back to where it needs to be from the beginning?
We don't have, we did propose a water quality testing condition in our application, but we don't have anything specifically on soil testing. But I don't, if you're.
How would you feel about including something like that?
I mean, it's in the details, right? Like if a site's been being sprayed with chemicals for the past however many seasons of crop rotations, we want to make sure we're not liable to like anything that would show up in 30 years that's not attributed to anything we're doing on the site.
So you're saying it might be in your own interest to do some baseline analysis?
We did a phase one environmental site assessment and they didn't observe anything that like came, were abnormal, or abnormalities. I don't know. I mean, if we're not opposed to it, I'm more interested in it from like a soil organic matter perspective of like planting the right mix and rebuilding soil health.
I mean, you might be turning over the site in better shape than.
That's.
It started from the perspective of using agrochemicals and so on, right?
No, and it's a reality. I mean, we, we know, we know a couple other founders of other development companies. One's called Silicon Rants in Tennessee. They're like, who we like look up to a lot. And they've been doing a lot of soil samples, mostly on projects in the south and Georgia that have been like degraded farmland, 100-year of industrial, kind of like rotation of corn, soy, wheat.
Personally, from, just for good measure, I, I would respect you very much if you, if you did a random sampling, survey, soil samples.
I mean, we could probably work with the extension.
Okay. And if you had a chance yet to speak to our fire chief, Chief Moody, about the project and take any feedback from, from him on it, yeah?
Yes, I, I haven't spoken with him directly, but I do believe that he provided comments on our application and we, we will be coordinating with them, you know, prior to construction and ensuring they have all the safety and, and access for, for emergencies and that sort of.
You would be well advised to do that before coming for approval. And then I know there's other horse property in the area. The pile driving could be a little, you know, upsetting to the animals. Are you in communication with the other horse properties in the area there?
Yep. Yeah, we, they came to the focus group, to the focus group and we exchanged contact information and provided information about time.
And we described their feedback with, when you told them you'd be driving piles for three weeks?
Well, it was the legal counsel to the plantation. And so we did talk to her. She, she was in like an information gathering stage. She had a binder about this high, full of information. So we were just trying to be informative and share. And she just was asking a lot of questions like, well, what if this, what if that? Will the solar panels create glare that impact the racetrack? And so then we would show her photos or say, I welcome you to come out. There's a big forest in between. We're at this low level. It won't be able to jump past the forest, right? So we've been more exchanging information. Kara's exchanged emails. That's the extent. It's mostly information exchanging.
Good, good. And I guess my last question is, with respect to how the community solar aspect works, I'm not terribly familiar with it, but what, what happens if you're sort of oversubscribed? Like too many people want to sign up or is, is it first come, first served? Or how is that allocated and so on?
Yeah, Virginia has a, actually has more demand than supply right now. The legislature is trying to fix this by authorizing more projects than there are today. But yeah, so you, you basically will work with a subscriber organization. Like if you go to that first slide that was on my bill, I don't know who was keeping the slides.
I'd like to get in on that personally.
It's, I've had it since, since I moved to DC three years ago. And my bill is painful to look at, but it's because I charge my vehicle. So that's also my gas bill, my fuel bill, but.
In, in future presentations and so on, if, if, if it were possible to create a real simple sort of public education flyer about how we might be able to take advantage of this in practical terms. What do, who do you call? What website do you go on or this and that?
Sure.
That'd be really good.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. Thanks for the suggestion. But it's, it's great. I mean, I'm going to probably just do solar on my roof later this year because the tax credit for homeowners going solar goes away this year for homeowners. But at least for the past almost three years, I've saved like, I think I'm probably over, over a thousand dollars now for doing nothing, like no down payment. I just set it up and subscribed to it.
Thanks for the solar.
More questions?
Mr. Queercoin.
Well, sorry, Mr. Kendrick. Let's let everybody have a chance first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is the status of the Daisy Hill, Caladon Solar Medium-Scale Facility?
Those are two different projects.
Oh.
The Davis Hill project.
Davis Hill.
That's still under consideration by the board. The applicant is under deferral right now. And the Caladon Solar project got approved by the board at the last board meeting.
Yeah. Something nice to see is a preference for low-income access to subscribers. That's been proposed to us before and is very well received. Who is the applicant? Would it be the landholder or?
We are.
You are the applicant.
The project, the project company. Yep.
Right, so it's a lease hold.
Yeah, we have a. Yeah, we have a leasehold interest in Larry's land. That's correct.
So you're the accountable person if everything goes well. Okay.
Yeah.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, whether?
I was just going to say it would be helpful to know the value of that equipment and what the county would expect to receive in the people tax. And I guess we'll get rollback on the real estate taxes as well. I assume the landowner is in the land use, the farm is, yeah. I think, I think it would help your case to point these things out as benefits to the county.
Great. We'd be happy to.
And is Mr. Nicely still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
All right, you have some questions?
I only had, yeah, I have this, yeah, I have a suggestion. One is to the, the, to this applicant, take a look at previous conditions and proffers or whatever they want to look at for previous applications for solar projects. I have two specific things that they can address later. I don't require an answer now, but I'd like to have it addressed in later submissions is what are they planning for stormwater runoff? I see, looking in the later slides, there's a, there's a little bit of a swale there on the property that runs off towards the Rappanic River, about a 10-foot drop. So you're going to get some water collection and water runoff. What are you planning to do to control that? And the second one is you made a comment about you have, I don't remember the exact term, you said you have an agreement or some initial coordination with Dominion. Is that power line, that three-phase power line that runs down through there adequate to take in the power, the five megawatts that you're planning to put? Or is Dominion going to have to completely upgrade that three-phase power line and the substations associated with that line? And what are those, what are the required modifications? These are things you can bring to us at the next submission.
Sure thing. Well, we'll definitely take a look back, especially at the most recent project that was approved to verify the conditions. We often do that in our applications, is go back to conditions of approval and build our SUP application, our special exception application in the framework of that, just so we're speaking a shared language with planning staff. So, but thank you for the reminder because I don't, when we drafted our application, that was probably five months ago, so it's probably could use a good refresh. The second question was on Dominion Energy. So, man, I filed the interconnection application with Dominion in 2019. They didn't even study it till 2024, and then we got the final studies and the agreement in 2025. So we're, studies are all done. We have a legally binding agreement with Dominion Energy, spells out every nook and cranny. There's no changes to the three-phase power distribution, power system that's right there. It's actually one of the best of the 20 interconnection applications we've done since we've started in Virginia. This is the best interconnection we've seen. We were jumping for joy because usually Dominion will ask for a gold-plated transformer with like caviar on the side. This one was like just perfect. The system is like, needs the power right there anyway, so it fits in perfect. So no changes to the substation, just controls and relays just to communicate for shutdowns and switches to turn things off from a safety perspective. But no, this is actually like chef's kiss. It's pretty impressive.
Yep, well, with, yeah, with, with your follow-on presentations, it would be good just to have that in the record of what you have from Dominion. Thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, you had more questions?
Oh, not right now. It's just water, it's just rainfall. If it's particularly dry season, maybe you bring in a water truck, but usually the return on investment to run water to wash is not worth it in the mid-Atlantic. We get enough rainfall here. Yeah, we'll bring that up, so rainfall as well.
All right, I just have a few questions. Have you decommissioned a solar farm yet?
Yeah, in Gainesville, in Gainesville, Florida.
How do you, from what I understand, there aren't a lot of them that are decommissioned, especially after 40 years. So how do you get your estimates for what is going to be required?
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's kind of, decommissioning is like construction backwards. So you've got a pretty good idea of what it's going to take to, to disassemble your solar panels. So we know based on building projects over the years, how many hours it takes to mount panels. But the same way that you mount them is the same way that you dismount them. So we basically reverse engineer our construction process. You'd be surprised, there is a lot of stuff being decommissioned now, actually earlier than the 35, 40 years, which is surprising to see. So one of our good peers in the industry, that's his whole business, is all he does is decommission projects. He doesn't build solar. So we've worked closely with him over the years to like make sure that we're, our logic and our methodology is on par with what, what is reality. But yeah, we've decommissioned one, one ground mount, and then we decommissioned a couple rooftops for re-roofs, which is also similar, where you're unbolted panels, stacking them onto pallets, putting them to the side, or taking them off the roof, re-roofing, putting them back on. So it's, it's quite literally installing backwards.
And I understand that in the state of Virginia, you can leave things buried. Is that something that's a typical practice for you? If it's under a certain number of inches, do you leave anything behind?
I'm not familiar with that. Is that in a lease agreement or that's a?
The state law.
In the decom plan? Yeah, we'd have to look into that personally. I'd have to, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I'm not familiar with the statute either. I just know from our decommissioning plan that we're required to remove everything that's buried 30, at least 36 inches underground.
So what, what would be below that level?
I'm like 90% sure you wouldn't, you wouldn't be going below 36 inches. Like you can bury wire more shallow than that. And even then, I'm not sure you would want to, why you wouldn't want to recover the copper. So I'm not familiar. I can get an answer for the next time we're in front of you.
That'd be great, some clarification on that.
Now, 36 inches is pulled from the statue? Is that the?
I believe it's state law. And for instance, if you're having trouble getting one of those piles out, you could cut it off at 36 inches. So that's kind of what I'm getting at, is what, what the process is for decommissioning? Would you leave anything behind and why?
Okay.
And.
Yeah, I could see people doing that if they did concrete, like if they had to, like ballast with concrete, I could see someone cutting it out of base. For these, you would just like right at the top of the piles, there's these slots in there from when you're installing that you would just ball and chain them and go up. So, but thanks for that. We'll get an answer.
All right, thanks. That's all my questions.
All right, I think we're good. We look forward to seeing you next time. Okay, staff reports.
The staff report's included at the end of the packet, and let us know if you have any questions. On a staff level, we have a position currently open for a permit tech, and it closes on Friday, so we're going to interview for that position, hopefully fill it pretty quick. And then as far as upcoming items for meetings, we just have these folks, so depending on how quickly they turn around the answers to your, y'all questions, we can figure out when we're going to get them on for public hearing. But you had a lot of good questions tonight, so I'm assuming they're going to want to come back and maybe we do another resubmitting, so we'll, I'll get with them on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on staff report? All right, no committee reports. So Mr. Decorder, do you want to discuss your commission report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is, I'm going to ask for a, a motion to request the Board of Supervisors consider establishing a committee, including planning commission members and others who they may designate, to, to explore and develop recommendations for rationalizing our approach to land use, land, land trusts, land conservation. This is like the flip side of the disincentivizing development. It's incentivizing conservation, preservation of historic architecturally sensitive in order to meet the, the goals of, we want to attract tourists. You know, we need trails, we need riding trails, we need, I mean, our existing staff, I think, is doing a great job, but someone who wants to conserve, and Virginia has extremely generous tax credits for people who want to put their land in trust or, or conservation. But the issue is, when they do that, we, we lose it. We've got, you know, 1,000 acres where we can't, no, we can't go, it's closed. You know, it's, it's a private preserve, and they get the tax benefit. Not that we would necessarily get it, but it would give landowners an additional option. And combined with a land trust or a land bank, we could set the regulations. We could allow hunting, we could allow riding trails, we could allow, actually, we could, in the case of a land bank, we, we could issue tenders for developing housing. Charles County has had a land trust since 96. Danville's had a land bank since 2014, I think. So there, there are different options about how we could do this, both encourage existing landholders to participate in, in transfer of development rights, all the way up to full conservancy. They're regional, Northern Eck has a great one, but again, it's their rules. And this kind of hit my radar when we had the last three, we had the, the solar farm in Shiloh, where the operators wanted to donate the land at the end of its 40-year lease to a conservancy. And they said, well, which one, King George? You want us to choose? And they gave us a menu and several good ones, but I was thinking, why don't we have our own conservancy? And, and we could put riding trails on it if we wanted, or we could make a hunting preserve or a fishing preserve. Caladon Solar, almost, which was recently approved, hit a hitch because the conservation easement that had been in place for many years, the language was ambivalent, and our ability to adapt, adopt, or change it was nil, you know, creating a vulnerability if someone wanted to sue us. I've seen land banks work very well. Martha's Vineyard, I mean, it's, you can go hunting in 27 different places in Martha's Vineyard. Archery, non-archery, dog, dog parks, everything owned by a land trust is maximum public access. And we lack that here. So I got just overwhelmed with the number, with the options, the, you know, local control. The state has a very, has a statute governing this. It allows us to do it. It gives us more citizen control over how we conserve, how well we conserve, and, you know, what's maximizing the benefit to, to community residents. I mean, there are noble goals in conservation for its own sake, but we have historical sites that we, we don't even know, especially in Native American and early heritage. It's, it's, and finally, it could be a way, as, as a recipient of proffers, just a standard existing thing. We need a public boat ramp. We need a, Bill Davis, my, my Board of Supervisors in Dogren, wants to create a city center, town center, year-round market. Right now, we really don't have great mechanisms to do that. So I am humbly requesting that we prove a motion to send this recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
So I appreciate you bringing this topic up, and I also share a lot of your views about conserving land and, and the idea of a land bank, I think, is appealing. I've done some reading about it in the last couple of weeks, and I know that the state statute says that it can either be run by a government body or a nonprofit. And then it's been used in a lot of places to take vacant or tax delinquent land and refurbish it into a more of a community, you know, something that's not been taken care of and, and turn it into something that's good for the community. Land can be donated, purchased, or transferred from the local government. We already have a mechanism where land can be transferred to us. I believe that they're, they're trying to do that with the data center, putting the trail in. One of the data center applicants was going to give us a parcel. So I know that those opportunities already exist. And so my question, I guess, before, I don't want to turn around and do to the Board of Supervisors, but we kind of felt like they did to us, which was, say we want to have a committee or a meeting and not establish what our goals are and what the costs might be, because there's, you know, going to be staff, there's going to be legal fees, liability, maintenance for these lots. And I have some concerns about the amount of staff, time, and buy-in for the members of the committee if we don't have the, at least three Board of Supervisors that is interested in this topic. So I think I want to, my idea, and I'm definitely willing to hear other ideas, was to present a more bulky goal, maybe, you know, a page or two of what our goals are and what, you know, what we want to establish here, before we just say we want to create a committee, because I know staff has to, to be there for every time more than two of us meet. Is that unreasonable?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think, on one hand, I don't want to rush to a solution before we have a shared understanding of both what the boundary conditions are and what, you know, the objectives are. There's a lot of fact-finding to do that we could probably do internally with a planning commission, committee on developing the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So I would say that's a reasonable alternative, is to, is to get two or three of us, planning commissioners, on a study group and.
So we don't have to ask for a committee that we create ourselves? The chair can create a committee? I can do that?
Very powerful person.
So I certainly agree that it's, it's an idea worth exploring. And if, but I agree with you, Madam Chairman, is if we could just sort of frame it a little bit, what we're trying to accomplish, is it possible that we could take that framing document and pass to the people that are being hired to help do the comprehensive plan and get them to do some of that in more in-depth research? They have the ability to go out to the surrounding counties or anywhere really and look at, you know, sort of the better programs that might exist. I mean, Mr. Decorder mentioned Martha's Vineyard. I, to me, that's a very touristy kind of place, so maybe I just don't appreciate it. But, but, but it's, maybe they could do some of the research, because they, it's amazing how much information they can gather and how quickly they can gather, because that's what they do.
So one of my questions would be, if more than one, sorry, if more than two, this is for staff, if more than two of us meet, what is, what is the requirement? It has to be?
Public hearing.
It's got to be fully public and, and has to be advertised at least a week in advance with an agenda, and has to be open to the public?
So that three or more? So three or more?
Yes. Three or more.
Three or?
You can have two. Yes.
More than two?
Than two is a, is a meeting.
Two could probably do it.
I was going to say, can we maybe, without putting that, that pressure on staff to be there, work together in twos, and try to come up with some goals and some framework, and before we try to make a bigger committee or push this back to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, but again, goal setting is, is what the board does. You know, the best we can communicate is a sense of urgency and, and recommended path, you know, or solution. We, we should recommend to them what the goals should be, and they're embodied in the comp plan. This a means to get there, it's just a, you know, or, or is it not? You know, is it an underutilized resource? The, the grant monies that rain down on these programs, and let me say about Martha's Vineyard, Duke County is the poorest county in Massachusetts. Yeah, the median, lowest median income in any county in the state of Massachusetts. It's, you know.
So as I was looking at this, and I would have-
Sanibel Island is another high, you know.
I just remember a few years ago, there was a proposal made coming out of this body, yes, the board, thinking about water, you know, the ability to have fresh water for the county, and, and a proposal for studying a reservoir was made. That got shot down so quick, and pretty much we got the direction to just drop it. I would prefer to do what you're talking about, which is, let us put a little bit more form and body to this proposal. I think he's got a lot of information, and he would be perfect to lead that with help, and it could be one of us at a time, but different times over the next couple of months, and see if it's worth putting something together and propose it for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, because we're going to be working with the board during that development, so they'll get to see it then and know we're doing it. Don't have to ask for permission, we can put the little study together ourselves, but they won't be unknowledgeable that we're doing it. And then if they decide they don't want us wasting our time on it, they'll certainly share that with us. I don't think they're shy.
I spoke to my supervisor, Bill Davis, and he green-lighted it from his perspective, and said, send me the, send me the recommendation. If we're not prepared to do that, we can get prepared to do that. You know, we are currently members of two other land trusts, the Northern Eck and the Old Dominion, land trusts, and it could be just expanding that affiliation, or, you know, inviting them to present to us periodically, but, you know, the idea of, of local control, locally-developed objectives, locally-developed pathways to get, get them.
So, I, I want you to know, I'm totally on board, I'm not trying to shut down the idea at all. I, when I looked at this, like I said, not only did I look up landbanks, but I was referenced conservation easements, purchase of development rights, transfer of development rights, agriculture and forestal districts, and so there's, there's large lot zoning, which we just decided was not in our best interest for the county right now. And so, I think there's a lot of pieces to this, and I, I want us to be very educated, because I want to utilize all of that knowledge in this coming year. So I'm not, I don't, I don't want to not do this, I just don't want to put a lot of pressure on staff if we don't have the support informally by the Board of Supervisors, otherwise we're just spinning wheels.
I can do a more robust package, informed opinion, research, I can talk to the, I have visited five different land banks. Land trusts, and we do conservation easements now, we do very well, this property category which is for cultural use. Individual landowner gets the benefit of, I'm just getting the value.
Could you please turn your mic on, Mr. DeCorder?
I'd be happy to develop a more robust presentation for this body that we can take to the board, or modify, or.
So you don't mind being a point of contact if people have, on our commission have questions? They can email you, and you can incorporate that into, you know, something that we might feel?
Experience or data, you know, or, you know, I know New Kent County is a pretty robust land trust activity. But, yeah, I, I can put together a presentation that makes the case for establishing a study group and spending the county time, because we, we have a lot of county resources applied to assisting developers develop the land, we should have a little county resources.
I agree. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on that?
Just a quick one. What, what was the motion that you were looking for?
Recommend to the Board of Supervisors establishing a joint study group to develop recommendations for improvements or, or no action to our land conservation, land trust, land bank. I mean, maybe we do need a FTE.
It's all great, but I would think that the more construct we can put around, the more specificity we can put around it before it goes to higher levels, the more traction you're probably just likely to get, you know, spoon-feed people to a certain extent and let them.
My sense is that going to them very directly right now wouldn't be to our advantage, but as part of the comprehensive plan, the lead-up to it, floating the idea, letting them think on it, providing a little bit of a structured format for what we're trying to do, and, and seeing if they just buy into building it into something else, might be the way to go. I, like I said, I think it's an interesting idea, I've never thought of it. The only thing close to it that I'm aware of is the Friends of the Rappahannock, which I know they've done some stuff where private land has been put into, you know, conservation easements for them, and, and then they decide how they use it for the public's interest. I don't think it's associated with the county or the city of Fredericksburg, is it?
King George County is a member of the Friends of the Rappahannock Land Conservancy.
But I mean, that, that's one local source to at least chat with people about their knowledge on it.
Protective insurance and risk.
Right. So let's put this on the agenda again next month, so that we can discuss it more, because I, I'm all about being as educated as we possibly can be in all of this moving forward. There's a lot of opportunities out there, and especially, like you said, with grant money, we don't want to miss those opportunities, and I think it, it is in line with what we say is important to us in our comprehensive plan. I appreciate it. I appreciate you, you putting the effort into getting that together. If we have no other future business, there's only one thing left on the agenda.
I recommend that we adjourn our Planning Commission to the next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. What is the name of this boardroom? Is it this boardroom? What is the name of this boardroom?
Rivercombe.
Okay. In the boardroom of the Rivercombe Building. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.